Attention please. My name's Marty Aitkins, I'm the chairman.
Yes.
The vice chairman's not here tonight. The board members, Mr. Frankel, Mr. Barry, Mr. O'Brien. This is our clerk, this is Griffin, Mr. Plonlin, Commissioner and Director, behind me. If you have a cellphone, could you please put it on silent or vibrate not to interrupt the meeting? If you want to speak, please step outside. Anyone going to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand, take a note. Mr. Frankel, please.
Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter that you're testifying?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You don't have to, you're a lawyer.
Double intent, I mean.
Going down. All right, first on the agenda. ZBA 2390 Patrick Foley Esquire for variance finding to replace the existing auto body shop with a nine-unit condominium building, one commercial unit, and 23 parking spaces on the premises number 10 Independence Avenue. And there's a letter here, they want a motion to withdraw without prejudice. On the motion, please.
ZBA 2390 Patrick Foley Esquire for variance and finding to replace the existing auto body shop with nine-unit condo building and one commercial unit with 23 parking spaces on the premises number 10 Independence Avenue in Quincy. Here, like, move to withdraw without prejudice.
Second. On the motion, stand down, all in favor? Right, opposed? Some move. Now, anyone going forward tonight, there's only four of us on the board. So, if you want a variance, you can't lose one of us. You have to get all four of us to be on your side. Or you can come back and there'll be a fifth person the next time you come, we'll make sure there's five people. Someone's in the hospital and someone is overseas, so we're missing a few people.
Someone's sick.
Someone's sick, right. So, let's start with 78 Bellevue.
Yep.
You want to go forward?
My only question is, when we were here two weeks ago, Radel, Mr. Radel, Mr. Chin were here, so I don't know if Mullen will apply, if Ms. Frankel is...
I viewed the tapes.
You have, okay.
He viewed the tapes, every one of them twice, he said.
We will move forward tonight, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. 87 Dorchester Street.
Go, go, go.
Forward. And 19 Agawam Road.
Go.
Go forward, okay. Let's go back to ZBA 2436, equate to for a variance to widen the driveway and create a coupure on the premises 78 Bellevue Road. We were here before, no one was in favor. No one's in favor of the coupure that we talked about, the driveway. Now, we understand that there's a permit given to you for two four-foot walkways and a 28-foot wide driveway. Twenty?
Twenty to a walkway, 28.
Twenty-eight total, twenty-four and, oh, okay. So, we have, we have a lot of things going on down there. We have a fine because someone cut down a tree. You say that someone from the city did it, correct?
Correct.
You have a letter to that?
I have an email from the tree warden. He was retracting his letter that he submitted to this board, which held the homeowner responsible for the removal of that tree.
When did you get that?
That was not done. Today.
Right.
I was communicating, okay, he said he was submitting stuff that was going to advise the zoning board in that respect.
All right. Didn't say nothing in the end, okay. They're not on my investigation, not...
Right.
So, what they're doing is they just investigate, correct? He says, based on the investigation, that's why I feel comfortable retracting the law, I'm requesting a home order. But if our continuing investigation reveals other facts, we may bring this back. We have a chance, okay.
If I may say something?
Let's say, let's say that issue's gone, the tree issue. What about the paving issue? Why did he pave that whole thing?
So, I mean, he had a, I'm not going to point out a contractor or anything, but he had a contractor that did paving work. It just came to me today that, you know, based, I requested the paving permit today and hadn't received it. I just received it from Kathleen this evening. So, I'm just becoming aware of that. What was paved was not what was permitted. I have requested relief from this board tonight for just that as well, though, the paving of a certain percentage of that front setback. The walkways, in my understanding, the walk waivers will be, they weren't completed yet, those are paved, those are pavers, those aren't paved with asphalt. So, I don't think that's included in the, in the percentage. But the request tonight was obviously the paving of beyond that 30% of the front setback on one street, Bellevue, in this case, and a request to, to extend the curb cut. It was from 22, it was today, to 32.
So, it's 32 foot wide he paved it, when it's supposed to be 20 in two four-foot walkways.
I thought it was 28 by 28, was it?
Twenty feet driveway and two four-foot walkway, 28 total.
But you have a permit to do that, why wasn't it done like that?
I can't answer that question. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Those are my questions.
However, I am requesting the, the required relief with respect to that.
I asked for an answer and you don't have. Me, go back to the 20 plus the two four-foot walkways, I'll be going nowhere myself. Questions, any questions?
Any clarification?
Mr. Frankel, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. The tree, there's a letter there from, from the tree warden. We should be tracking it now and we still investigating. If we find something, we'll bring it to other channels.
If I may speak on the tree, Mr. Chairman? So, here's, here's what happened. My client, after he had done his addition, or even before that, that particular sidewalk in front of his home, and we see it in other sections of the city as well, I know the mayor's working hard to, you know, concrete sidewalk, every single sidewalk, potentially in the city of Quincy. This particular sidewalk, because of the high root system and that particular tree, completely disrupted that entire sidewalk. Somebody fell injured. My client noticed it because it's right in front of his home. There was a group from the Parks Department that was working on a, doing some landscaping on one of the islands. He went over there, visited them, said, can you take a look at this, this, this walkway?
Over the island?
Yeah, oh, yeah, went over the island, grabbed one of the guys there, came over. One of those guys looked at the sidewalk and said, absolutely, this should be removed because of the high root system for this particular tree. I advised tree warden after this hearing two weeks ago of that. I did finally get a response from him, and it was just what he said. You know, he, I wasn't able to talk to him, it was more just email communication back and forth. I said, I do need something to clarify the removal of the tree for the zoning, you know, because they were questioning it a couple of weeks ago. Can you please provide something? That's what he's provided.
Okay.
But that's what happened.
And I get it.
My client had nothing to do with the removal of the tree.
But here's what I said. You've got a permit to put the 20-foot wide driveway with two four-foot, two four-foot walkways, and he didn't do it. I mean, you know, you just think you can do it and ask for, ask for...
And I, and I know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor this, but it's important for me as counsel for the applicant...
Do you like to be interrupted? Do you like to be interrupted? I don't either, and I never got some...
I apologize, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
It's important, counsel for any applicant, that we receive all communication regarding this matter, okay? This, the past hearing two weeks ago, I did not receive the letter from the tree warden until I got here that evening. I did not receive these permits either until I got here this evening. So, that's not fair to us, for us to be able to respond.
Your client has those permits, you've got to get those. That judge wants a lawyer to go get those permits.
I wasn't questioning the permitting.
Well, you just said you didn't get the permits.
I wasn't questioning the permitting.
You didn't get the permits.
Till, till this evening, from this board, yeah.
Your job is to get the permits.
I think it's important that we receive all correspondence that are filed with this particular, for any particular matter, you know, prior to the hearing. You know, I have a job to do for my client as well, and it's important that I receive all communication.
But your client had a job to do too, just putting a 20-foot driveway with two four-foot walkways, and he didn't.
Somebody paved before him.
Yes.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure he knew exactly what was supposed to be paid.
Someone told him how to pave. People don't go in and pave the yard, they just don't do that unless they're told what to do. Okay, I guess I'm done.
But regardless of that, the request, the request, you know, requested tonight was for the paving of that entire area. You know, so we're trying to resolve that particular matter as well. That's why this relief was requested.
Your clerk said she just mailed, emailed you and asked you about the permits, and you never got back to her.
I don't think I, I don't think I received that communication.
Huh? Is there a reply from you? Okay.
So, in regards to, this is the email that I sent on the 10th. Good afternoon, I wanted to touch base with you regarding the permits for this property were requested by Chairman Aitkins. Will you be researching them and bringing the printed copies with you to the June 18th ZBA meeting? On June 17th, I received a reply to this email stating, Kathleen, I did not see Stephen Quaito on tomorrow's ZBA agenda. There was a revised agenda that apparently didn't get uploaded, I apologize. My client has advised me that he spoke with the tree warden, who has confirmed that it was the city who removed the tree, and he will be providing the board with a letter. Do you have that letter so it can be made part of the record?
If he gave me one.
Please let me know if you have received anything.
He sent me, I just received an email tonight, so...
So, I sent this email in regards to whether you would be researching the permits and bringing them to Chairman Aitkins, or would I? And the reply I got was in regards to the tree, so there was no conversation about the permits, although I addressed it.
Okay. My apologies. But again, the relief I'm requesting tonight covered, covered all of that as well, that particular area that was, was indeed paved. Was it rightfully paved? Maybe it was, you know, but I still requested the relief tonight for that area to be paved, so...
We have, here, we have requests for your request. Personally, I think if you did it the right way first, but didn't do it after it, it'd be a completely different story. But for people to go pave stuff and change what was done, a permit, I have no problem with that.
Would you object if my client was agreeable to the, to the 20-foot driveway coming in off Bellevue, but kind of fishtailed out to be able to access those garages? You know, so you have, you have more grass landscaping. I think he's just trying to provide access to the free car garage.
I know, and I get it, I get it, I get it.
So, he would be amenable to that, to have it centered on the middle garage off of Bellevue and just kind of fishtail out a little bit so you can access each garage. So, we will keep it to the 20, you're fine with that.
I know, we got three other people here to speak.
Sure.
Does your client intend to deal with that sidewalk? While he's doing whatever, is the curb cutting and...
Yeah, certainly the curb cutting is all on him to do, even run new curbing, it's installation of new, probably, grant of curbing, I'm assuming, right? And it's probably, you know, the con, I don't know if it's concrete down there, or is it just asphalt?
Well, I just, I'm wondering, I'm guessing that some of that sidewalk's going to get messed up, that, that stump, I mean, I don't care if it's done...
With the installation of the curbing?
The, no, the, the roots are, then it's got to come out.
It has to, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise you're going to lose the bottom of your car.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so that will have to be addressed as well.
Any questions?
How many parking spaces are you looking to achieve? You have three garage spaces. There's currently enough swing space to get in and out of the, facing the house, the left side. How many parking spaces on the exterior are you looking to achieve through this project?
I don't, maybe one more space, but I'm more concerned on the safety of backing in and out of the driveway. It's a bus stop, there's a couple of big trees, you know, blind spots, so I'm more concerned on the safety than anything.
You, you currently have enough room for a car to back out and flip around, so they're coming head forward.
Not really. You've got to maneuver, you know, drive him over a sidewalk, yeah, sure.
You don't have to drive over the sidewalk, you have, you have plenty of room to flip a car around if you're not trying to park three in the garage plus three more cars.
Yeah, I'm not looking to do that.
So, my question is, how many exterior are you looking to park any cars on the outside?
Well, I own five vehicles, so...
Do you live there?
Yes.
Where are the five cars? There's been no cars in the driveway.
I have two that I loaned out to some friends that need it, and I also have a second home, summer home in Marchville, and that's where two of my other cars are right now.
So, there's currently no cars that have been parked in the, in the driveway at all, and you have two...
Yeah.
Is that a tenant in the lower level parking on the street?
I don't have a tenant, I have a friend of mine staying there, I told him so.
So, you're not, you, what I'm saying is, you, you have plenty of, you have asphalt space that is going unused and you're parking cars on the street.
On the side street, yeah, I, I guess. Is that not allowed to park on that patio?
I'm just trying to understand how many cars you're trying to achieve parking for.
Well, I think if we designed driveway with a 20-foot onto Bellevue and kind of fishtail into the garages, I think there's going to be very little room to park vehicles outside of the garage. Maybe one in the middle, that's about it.
How long's the current curb cut?
22?
No.
No, it's...
16.
Oh, 16, okay.
16, 14, 16.
No, it's 14.
So, you're talking about reconfiguring it to put 20 in the middle?
Yeah, bring it right to the center, basically.
How about giving back some of the asphalt that was paved without permit?
Yeah, we would, we would rip that out, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't have...
I think we'd need to see a design. We'd have to see a new site plan with the 20 feet and what asphalt you're going to give back, because you overpaved what you were allotting. So, I'm not willing to approve it without seeing a site plan.
That's probably a good idea, because we may...
That's more in line with what was approved for total asphalt area...
Okay.
...and a 20-foot wide driveway.
Okay, and removing what we intend to remove, we may not need relief at all, potentially. So, we'll see, okay.
I just don't understand, the tree warden's still investigating, so that...
No, 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 he, he said...
He's pretty sure?
He's pretty sure someone took that out.
Probably from the state.
I never told him they wanted on the city side, on the city side, so someone...
So, that's, that was all, that's, so then we're left with the driveway open.
They think it's resolved, but they're still looking at it. They want to make sure they get the right answers and who did it and why.
So, it's inconclusive?
Sort of, but the tree warden says it's not his fault.
Okay.
So, we need to find out, I don't know, maybe he's not biased, I don't know.
I don't understand how you, what you, you build three drop, three driveways, and you only have a driveway for two, which the 20 feet will get to the two, right?
I think what he applied for was probably going to be enough to access all three, but very difficult. And that's why we're here today, to make it a little bit easier to navigate the driveway to access all three garages.
What I'm saying is that, who would have designed it?
I'm with you.
I recognize.
I'm with you.
Yeah, I, I want to see more, please.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to definitely need a plan, how it's going to be fenced, how it's going to not be...
What should be removed?
Two feet, one foot, you know, the one...
Okay.
The walkways that should be installed, right?
Well, yeah, they'll be installed on the plant.
Right.
Right, and then then we can look at it again.
We can, we can do that relatively quickly, I think.
Can we do that two weeks?
Yeah.
And get this done? All right.
July 23rd, excuse me, July 9th.
July 9th.
July 9th.
Very good. An motion to continue this to July 9th, and then you even have plenty more answers from lots of people. I'm Chase, ZBA 24-36, Steve P. Quaito, for variance to widen the driveway and erect a coupure on the premises numbered 78 Bellevue Road, Quincy, Mass. Move that the matter continue to July 9th.
Second.
On the motion, stand down, all in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Some move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your pardon, I must...
And a coupure's been removed.
Coupure's found.
Well, it's still in there, it's still on the...
Continued and continued to taste, but that's the final thing, I don't think you all want to... Thank you.
And, oh, one other thing comes, is it was supposed to take out the sink, sink upstairs?
That wasn't part of my application, um...
But that was on the permit, it says, I'm not even going to inspect it until you take the sink out.
This is the sink where?
More about the garage, I understand.
Yep, it's the last thing.
Not really a zoning issue, I don't think, right?
Yeah, it is.
It's a zoning issue? What's a zoning issue?
Why, he told them to take it out, I asked if they took it out.
The house isn't finished.
Did you take it out?
There's no sink.
There's no sink, never, it was never installed.
Never installed.
Just the pipes?
Yes.
Okay. So, were the pipes taken in?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's what I wanted.
Okay.
To see if you follow what we're rationing to do, thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda. Janby, 24-4, Janu, Rittiani?
Rittiani.
Rittiani, there you go, for variance to erect a small patio, 10 by 16 shed. Now, you already have the shed there, my clerk?
The shed is already there, the patio is already there.
Name and address for the record, please.
19 Agawam Road.
All right, why don't you tell us what happened, what you...
Okay, I removed an existing patio and a flower bed that was about, about three feet high. Put a new patio in, about the same size, had a new shed delivered. Shed is too close to the fence. Now, I was away when the shed came, but I probably moved it a little further, maybe. Trying to maximize space, because, you know, the backyard's here, you know, it's a 5,000 square foot lot. I got three huge trees in the back that take up probably, you know, maybe a third of my backyard. Put a patio in, and now I'm stuck with, you know, pretty small backyard. I have a little deck out back, so I probably have right now, you know, maybe a length of my yard and a 10 feet wide grass.
Your Kiki house very nice.
I do.
Those are impressive, I like that.
Yes, we've probably, we've done the whole entire thing over, top to bottom.
Ring lights worn today, cars in the driveway, no one answered the door.
The ring doorbell was not installed correctly.
Ah.
So, ring it again.
I'm going to knock on the door.
Yeah, my wife, yeah, my wife works for Hall, so she probably could answer.
She's looking at me, I goes out, they're looking at me, someone's looking at me, they showed the back, they don't want to answer, they just...
I'm very loud.
Yeah, I quite thought I was telling someone, right? There was a lot of that. But I went around the side and I saw where they put it. I mean, and I get, that's where you put it, that's where you really, the guy that built shacks would put it. So, you're looking to get what, a foot over there, a foot, 18 inches?
Yeah.
Can you look at some so you can get behind it, paint it and do what you got to do?
Uh, yeah, I can move it. I'd rather keep it where it is, so not to fall a flop at all to move it, but...
You really want to get, tie up the walk, walk to it.
Yes.
I mean, you know, and you got to paint it someday, you got to do some, you should have 18 inches, you can get back in, get a roll in there or something, but, and I know it's, and that's what I'm just trying to look at.
Okay.
So, you can get to work on it. Any questions? You got a higher number of questions?
Yeah.
You can have a seat. Does anyone want to speak in favor? Speak in favor. First, second call, third call. Call outside of hearing, close. I got a letter here from Diki Duggan, who we haven't seen, but reference Chase, have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided, please step forward.
Can you turn them over, please?
Yes, opposed or undecided.
Yeah.
Come on up, name and address for the record, please.
I'm Bob Tulery, my wife Elaine, we live at 25 Agawam, adjacent to the Janini's property.
Okay.
The, the patio and shed, when they were built, we were actually unaware that this was being done. If we had, then we probably would have had some input into the location. But it is, in fact, within, say, like, five inches...
That's pretty close.
...on our fence, and we'd actually like to have more space. I mean, it's supposed to be a five-foot...
Six feet.
Six feet, according to code enforcement. So, I mean, we're, we'd just like to have it farther away from our fence, that's a reasonable amount. I mean, six feet might be, considering the size of this yard, you know, might be a little too much, but still, if we, because the fence is really starting to be repaired, if somebody's going to come along, they're not, they have a lot of ones to do with.
Right.
And, you know, basically, we just think that we'd like to have the thing moved farther away from our, our property, which is what we think it should be.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Anything else?
When it was, it was put up just about in July of last year, and when I noticed how close it was, I called the city to see if there was a restriction or whatever there was for close to the property. And the building department told me that there was a five, a six-foot setback of a building. So, he came out and looked at it, it was Paul Martin that I spoke with, and he came out and looked at the thing, and he told me it was, and he said he would send him a notice on it. I'm sorry, that's me doing that, I'm sorry. He sent him a notice telling him on it, and there was no response from the owner at all, and he sent him a violation, a first one of $100, and then there was no response, and he sent him a certified letter with another notice of $300 fine, and he had no response from it. And he also had spoken to the commissioner on this also, and it then, he told me to call the...
Who was that at the time?
The commissioner.
Mr. Duker.
Uh, I thought I had, I know I've got his name down here.
Yeah, okay. Who's Mr. Duncan? I didn't know who was, who he spoke to.
Paul Martin spoke to the commissioner, his, his boss. Oh, okay. All right. And he told him, you know, to go ahead with the proper things the way that he was following through on it. So, they told me to call the constituent service office, and she referred it to the legal department. And the fellow in the legal department that got back to me on it, when she sent him all the paperwork that I had sent, she sent it to him with all the details on it, was Michael Weber. And he had said that he had, you know, called the owner also on it, and that he wanted to do what was right, and he said if he had to, he would move it. It's not that we object to the shed at all, it's that, and I have pictures to show you on it, that it's within...
Real...
...five inches of, of the fence. That's the only thing, you know, on this whole thing. And he hadn't responded to any correspondence to any of the other departments at all with it, on the fines or anything. And I just don't think that that's a proper way to be doing things, living in there, and especially being a city employee, I don't think...
There's a microphone right there, I know it's hot. Microphone's right there, we tend to touch with its face. No, 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 the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It goes like that.
I'm sorry.
Okay. No, thank you, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you for the information. Um, is there anyone else? Opposed, run aside, second call, third call. Call outside, I can't even close, can I, can I speak to you, please, for a minute? Come up. So, please, Jenny. How'd we get here? She just said you got fined, you got this, you didn't pay them, and never spoke to nobody?
Uh, I got, I did get fined a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Um, and then just, I, I, you know, talked to multiple people throughout the city, tried to, uh, see what, you know, what the proper channels were, they, they sent me to, um, I think I spoke with, um, I think I spoke with, y- yes. Uh, and then it took me about a month and a half to get a, I had to survey my land.
Mm-hmm.
I had to get the land survey out, and then I had.
They told you to do that, survey land.
Well, they told me to survey, yeah, they told me to survey my land, um, they said, uh, you know, I had to, I had to fast fly to get quick to get into the Patriot Ledger, because I, I would, I can't make the July date, so then I, I had to, so it, it's probably been about, I'd say, six months, seven, eight months, maybe.
Did you get here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It took me, it took me probably close to two months to get my land surveyed.
Oh. Who did?
I also, I, I bought it alive, didn't act right away, the second they came out there, I, I called and wanted to know what the, what the fines were and, and the proper channels. I got, I, I got one fine.
Oh, they say you get.
Well, how would they know?
Well, because they talk to them, I'm just, I'm just saying what she said.
No, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, I'm not saying you, I'm not saying you, what I'm saying is, they, they, you know, they peeking over the fence every thirty seconds, of course, they gotta come up and, and make all this stuff up. Um, now, with that being said, I will say this, is, they live in an only double lot in the street, okay, they, they have two lots, their, their second lot is in between their house and my, my house.
Mm-hmm.
It's a full lot.
Mm-hmm.
It's a fence, my, their yard goes at a slope.
Yeah.
Mine's straight, so my, mine, my shed even drops lower than their yard.
That's all right.
They have a tree line with all their trees that hang into my yard, which I know is obviously my dealings, but you can't even see that shed. I've, I've stepped over there, looked from their doorway, and you can't, you can't even see the shed.
You're going up, up on your deck, in the front, and looking over the top.
Okay.
Generally, you can see.
Right.
I couldn't see it.
So it's.
I looked through the fence.
Right, so it's blocked by a fence, it's blocked by their fence, it's blocked by a tree line, I put it, you know, it's tucked away in the corner, I mean, they could probably see, I would say, six inches of the actual sidewalk, and then the roof. It's a fifteen thousand dollar shed, it's not, it's crap.
To get their fence to work on it, to.
I, I completely, I understand that.
And you do too.
I understand.
Yes. All right, I just wanted to know where to find, I, I know the story, it happens a lot.
Yeah, yeah, so I did get fined once for a hundred dollars.
Did you get it, did you pay it?
Not yet, I was waiting, I was waiting for this to, I was waiting for this to go through.
How did you get here without paying? Oh, my God, no one pays.
I mean, I'm like, I'm like a point, I was told, so hold on to it until this goes through, and then we would deal with it.
Right. Yeah, see, a lot of people, it's not, they pay the hundred dollar fine, and then ask nine hundred bucks.
Nothing's going away with them, we'll, we'll tell you, nothing's going away with them.
Thank you, thank you, Peter. Uh, we'll call outside, I think we got, you got all our answers? All right. Uh, I'll be going to beg, like, to move it, uh, I do want to move, I don't know, uh.
Two feet.
Two feet, make it two feet, you want two feet, you get two feet.
How, how about eight?
Well, fair, yeah.
All right.
Fair enough? I don't give a, I don't have a problem with the way it is. I don't either, I, I really don't, but you do have to work on the fence, I mean, you gotta have some room to get in.
How about from your own side?
You can't stand in the trees.
No, it's.
You just can't, though, you couldn't tank that. If you went and saw the way.
No, I, I.
I mean, you, you can't get rolling.
Even on a long pole?
You go, oh, maybe, you go, oh, I'm poor, you're gonna find me to see. He may have, yeah, he could probably.
Snip, yeah, I bet.
He probably, come here, it happened. Is your, is your patio, I didn't get to see it's head.
So here's the only issue that I have, is that the patio, it sits on the, on the rocks on the patio, you move it over.
Yeah.
Would probably have to be, it probably, the way it is, would probably have to be built up underneath, like, even, like, be probably jacked up.
Well, you have to put, you probably have to move the feet, whatever's holding, over the.
Yeah, everything's gonna have to be.
Right, and slide it over.
It can't slide, so honestly, if I had to move it two feet, I'd probably take it down several, not, and, uh.
Why, why couldn't, why couldn't move?
I'd probably have to put, uh, the support underneath.
Yeah, no, right, yeah, what, what do you get? It's ten feet, correct?
Ten by sixteen?
Yeah, sixteen long.
Sixteen long?
Yeah, it's ten feet.
Yeah.
It's gonna slide. Really not hard to do.
No.
Really not. Yeah, depends, you have a cabbie, do you?
What's that?
Couldn't get a cabbie out there.
No.
Couldn't get a rock out there, it's pretty tough to get to, I know what you mean. Uh, you mean to tell me you couldn't move that, like, two feet?
Probably, I could move it, I could move it anywhere, it's just.
No, I'm just.
Probably right in the middle of my yard, right walking off the door, what I'm saying is I would probably, I would honestly probably, so, take it down. But the size of that yard, uh, where, uh, that's where it made enough spot to put it.
Everything is.
So, I mean, that's, I'm just saying, that's what I would do, I would need to probably.
Well, you want us to vote on it as it is, as is, and see how it goes, versus the condition of two feet, I mean.
Well, yeah, I guess my, my asking would be more, what are the other options? I guess we're gonna see the B. call it off at two feet, or I.
Well, if I could get back in the yard, because I couldn't get in there, usually I get in people's yards.
Stop it.
And all your lights were there, and everything was there, I just.
Catbird.
No, really, it was like, oh, ice on, everything's going on, I'm going on, people in there, I know.
My wife's home, my wife works from home.
It was two cars there.
It was two cars, so I was home too.
Yeah.
I was looking at you all the time.
All right, let's, let's continue us for a couple of weeks, let's get back in again. I, I, I saw the shed, that's all I saw, I'm looking over, I gotta look over, I couldn't see, I couldn't see his patio, I couldn't see nothing back there. He couldn't, he just can't see.
I disguised myself as a turkey.
And just walked back. I didn't want going back, yeah, I don't know who you are, shocked, yeah, yeah, try to let him know, but.
So. So, Dan, you stated that you were unable to attend the July meetings.
Oh, right.
You can't.
We have a, the next meeting is July ninth and July twenty-third.
Can you do it twenty-third?
If you are.
Um.
I mean, if you can't, you can't, we'll move it to August.
August.
No, I'll, I'll do that, you know, the reason I moved it up was so I can get things rolling in my backyard, because it's, it's, I figure out where that shed's gonna.
All right.
Uh, yeah, it's left to do the twenty.
Because you're not gonna be around July ninth, correct?
Twenty-third? All right. My motion, July twenty-third, we'll take a look at it, people do have to look. In case, CBA twenty-four dash four, Daniel Reggiani, for variance, correct a small patio to accommodate a ten by sixteen foot shed on premises number nineteen Aguaum Road, Quincy. Move that the matter be continued to July the twenty-fifth, twenty-four.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, oh, sorry, twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Second.
Con motion, stand now on favor? All right, all opposed, so move.
Thank you.
One more, all right? Mr. Barber, for variance and finding to demolish the existing two-family home, selectively repairing the existing foundation, erect approximately three thousand square foot single, single-family home on the premises eighty-seven Dorchester Street. Mr. Cowell, you are.
Good evening, Paul. Uh, I'd like to give you a little background information on our proposal for this evening. Eighty-seven Dorchester Street is probably one of the oldest homes in Squanam. Uh, at one time, it was a country store and an apartment, and then in the fifties, the Dempsey family bought it and converted it to a, uh, two-family home, where Mrs. Dempsey lived, and they had an apartment. In my tenure in Squanam, actually, it was the sub-referee for, uh, Star of the Sea Church, a newer part of the building. Well, the years went by, Mrs. Dempsey passed on, and she had two sons, uh, they did not live on the premises, uh, and they kept the home, and one always had the dream of moving back. So last year, a year ago last spring, they contacted me, and they said they had a problem with a tenant in there, one of the apartments was vacant, and the tenant was operating a business, so it was a lining business where he had trucks, paint, it was just a blight on the neighborhood. So with that, I got involved with Vic, um, cleaning out the site, paying all the fines, paying, going to the portal and paying all the fines in full, and cleaned it out, approached all the neighbors in the neighborhood and said, does anybody want this? Approached, uh, people on Trevore, I approached people on Dorchester Street, because the Dempseys, basically, even though they weren't living there, they were very grateful, uh, for what the neighborhood had done for their mother. So with that, I unsuspectively ran into Brian Karens one day, and mentioned it to him, Squanamite, and his brother Chris. So with that, they, they put their minds together, it was never listed, they purchased the property, and I can honestly say, in the first time in my thirty-five-year labor career, this is the first time I've ever come in front of this board where I've reduced the two-family to a one. You know, having spent, few, few people have spent many nights with me in the heat of summer trying to squeeze units into parcels, and also, I've reduced the asphalt on the site, so, um, Brian and, uh, Chris retained Tim Johnson, who we all know, who's done a lot of, uh, quality projects in the city, and the goal is basically to, uh, retrofit the existing foundation and to, uh, build the structure that he'll present tonight. Early this winter, I went down to the city of Quincy, uh, with the plan reviewers, showed them our plans, and the consensus was, we had to go to conservation, which we did a few weeks ago and got their blessing, and then number two, we had to, um, come to zoning. In essence, Tim will speak to some of the nuances, but the special permit for the flood plain. I'm ha, I'm happy to report, I, I monitored the whole site this winter with some of the largest floods and action we've had, and nothing dipped into this neighborhood. Anybody that's gone on site can see how still, uh, the lawn has been green and beautiful. So tonight, we're looking to go two to one, Tim will make a presentation, answer any questions. We notified all the neighbors, and, uh, with the counselor also, Bill Harris, and we also sent out a pretty, um, detailed letter of what we're gonna do, and received some responses. So I'll turn it over to Tim, and before I go, I'd like to thank Ms. Griffin for helping us align in this process.
Uh, well, we're basically going for the special, special flood plain.
Yes.
So that's basically it, and we're going from the two to the one, uh, which.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman members of the board, uh, here is the dark line showing the existing building footprint. So we are keeping the setbacks on three sides, as they are, and we are going over in this area right here, the deck, uh, this is, uh, part of the house, and then this big window is what goes beyond the existing building footprint. We got two families. So we go to the building section, quickly, before we lose this.
We're gonna come off the other side, speak.
Off on a Trevore. Sorry, I've been missing. Oh, lordy, lordy. About ten days.
Well, this one fails. Even on him, though.
It does?
Yeah.
There we go, okay, stop. Okay.
So, uh, we are in flood plain, uh, AE, we have a flood risk elevation twenty-one six three, which is Quincy sewer down, free board, which is the, uh, number of feet above flood risk elevation, required is one foot. We're, we're at, uh, two feet, existing, uh, first floor plate is two feet above the , uh, flood zone, AE, uh, FB, FB of twenty-one six three. So, uh, number one, number two is the existing, uh, basement, we are filling in with inorganic fill, uh, to a maximum of a four-foot crawl space, uh, we have our flood vents, uh, we did tell over on another page, uh, required flood vents for the, uh, new crawl space and filling requirements, uh, of the conservation commission. And mind you, we have, uh, Dorchester Street to the front of the house, and then we have the Federal Seawall across the street that will deflect any wave action. And lastly, the decks are all, we're using just, uh, isolated footings to minimize any water displace or dirt flooding, uh, we're not, uh, creating more crawl space areas that don't already exist already.
Which, um, curb cut will you be utilizing for this project?
The one-off Trevore, is it Trevore?
It's like, yeah.
Trevor?
Yes, they got two, two of them, right, but you, you taking apart, wanting to cover that up, correct?
You'll be giving the Dorchester Street curb cut?
Yes.
Lot better than what's there, and it's gonna look really nice. No, it's a good dock put into it.
Are you done with them?
No, I, I just got a couple. Uh, anyone have any questions?
I have no questions.
Bear?
Uh, no, I think the plans look great.
Difference in the height of the building? From today to the end of it?
Currently.
Thirty to thirty-one.
Thirty to thirty-one, uh, uh, we don't, we will, uh, keep it, uh, right in that area of thirty-one feet plus or minus.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, okay, uh, so if anyone is speaking, you can have a seat, is anyone speaking favor? First call, second call, please call close, I got a letter here, and D. W. I have to read it to the record, please.
To Marty, who's chairing zoning board of appeals from Chang Sang, civil engineer, dated June fourth, twenty-four, east of Dorchester Street, case number ZBA twenty-four dash twenty-eight. We have reviewed the submittal for the above reference project, and our comments are as follows.